We'll have a call to order. Marjorie Austin.
Here.
Larry Tuning.
Here.
Bill Volts with us here.
Alana Sporky.
Here.
Beth Chester.
Yeah.
We have a member, Robbie Wilson, who is requesting to participate electronically in tonight's meeting due to a personal matter relating to work travel. Might have a motion to approve his participation.
I'm making mention to Bruce Robbie to participate in this.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Having a quorum. Is those in reverse order? At the right place? Let's believe.
Let's believe. In the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on our own body, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the defendant as presented?
Simmons.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. First item is a public hearing on ordinance one dash twenty twenty five.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing held under the authority of fifteen point two dash twenty two zero four Code of Virginia nineteen fifty amendment. Necessary public notices have been made and the application materials have been or available for review and law during normal business hours. This is your first special use permit application for the year, calendar year twenty twenty five. The location is one eighty one West Avenue. The property owner is Paulinsky Poppy LLC, the applicant is Zach Lipinski. He requests us for the construction of an additional dwelling unit specifically above a storage area and attached in a detached twenty six by twenty six accessory structure, anticipating construction of a single family primary residence. The acreage is zero point two seven acres, tax map is twenty eight point seven C, the zoning district is R one. The overlay districts involved are the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District. Let me take a moment and address something that came up from the planning commission. This is not in a disordered district. So style of the construction, color of the construction is not dramatic. The use of the property is vacant before an accessory building and that's identified on the plat is a cinder block building that will be removed with a mixed history between occupancy and storage. The staff report lays out also then, because it's been, that structure has been presented at times as a dwelling unit. What makes up a dwelling unit are four elements. The cooking area, the kitchen, a bathing area, the bathroom, a sleeping areas that are identified by storage closets and living space. So those four elements. And that building does not have those four elements based on my inspection of the property inside the building allowed by the applicant. The adjacent composition is residential, again, everything zoned R one around it. Environmental, there would be an increase in non-permeable surface, which would result, but adequate mitigation measures would mitigate this. The comprehensive plan of the land's goal and objectives encourages formidable use of land as the area is primarily residential. Zoning compliance as proposed to structures placement is conforming. The configuration of lot and imposition of setbacks leaves a significant area of open space and would not unreasonably impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property as found in seventeen dash nine point four A of the Urbana Town Code. Various agencies, including the Virginia Department of Transportation and contractors were contacted for comments on this case. No comments outside routine development requirements in the city. Bill, condition two is intended to limit egress and ingress to West Street, which reduces points of conflict along the heavier travel across street. New construction drilling enhances the value of surrounding properties, thus no impairment to adjacent land values is likely. The condition three is proposed to further that enhancement. Proposed conditions one, five, and six are standard. Condition four was added as a result of input during the planning commission meeting. And the planning commission has recommended approval with those six conditions. Staff finds that per code section requirement cited above, the proposed use would not have an adverse effect on surrounding neighborhood for the disabled actions recommended on this SUP. Normally what I do is I ask if you all have any questions or comments, but the applicant is pressed for time this evening. So I'd like to defer those, give the applicant an opportunity to do his presentation, and I'd be happy to come back at any time for questions from staff.
Okay, so we're going to let Mr. Lipinski speak, and then you'll come for questions, and then we'll open it up for public comment?
That works for me.
All right.
All right, thank you. I'm not sure if everyone can hear me or not, but I'm thinking you can. So, you know, I'll defer to you mayor and town council to see if you have any questions or anything I can help answer in reference to this special use permit.
The first question I have is what's your eventual intended use for this property, having two dwelling units on the same property?
To own the property? I'm not quite sure what you mean by intend.
Is it your intent to have them as two separately occupied pieces of property? Or is it to, the two structures will be symbiotic, whatever you want to call it, so they're both for the same purpose? Or are they for two separate purposes?
The intent is just to build our primary, you know, first dwelling unit first. And for normal intended use, the secondary accessory dwelling unit, I'm not sure when it will be built. I guess I'm not quite following the question you're being, I'm asked, they're both going to be for residential use. Are you asking is one going to be a short term rental and one going to be a permanent residence or?
Or are they both going to be permanent residences for two different families?
Uh, no, they will not be two permanent residents for two different families. So what I intended and what I proffered on proffer number four states that the ADU will be, will not be used for short term rental. I can't, that means I can't even apply for a short term rental. It does state that I can use it for no less than thirty days, which is town law. So I felt as a, you know, property owner in town, I wasn't willing to give up those rights. But yeah, there's no intended use to have this property for two different families, no.
Mr. Lipinski, is it for your family?
My intended use, yes, is for us to use it for our family. I'm not intending to, I don't have any immediate plans to do anything with it. It's for my property. It's my brother in law's property and mine, so it's for our families. You know, we've owned other property in the town of Urbana. This isn't our first property we own either, so.
And so you need another dwelling like unit for what purpose?
For space. So, you know, the two, the original dwelling unit, it's a primary dwelling unit and the ADU both fit within the buildable area, so within the zoning constrictions. So instead of building one large piece of property that is cost prohibitive, that we can't afford to build, instead, we're going to build a smaller house first and then build an ADU at a later time. So instead of building a, you know, ten thousand square foot house, which is probably about what fits on the buildable area, instead, we're intending to use the first dwelling unit, it's going to be about thirteen seventy five. And the ADU will come at a later time and we can afford to build it.
Archery, any questions? Larry?
I'm not, it's maybe a Ted question. Excuse me.
No, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
Why is it a special exception? What makes it a special exception?
Because the way the ordinance is written, if it's a, if it's an additional structure, it's been due from A one and by right, it was a special copy. So anyone who's just building one house in this great process.
Who would be involved?
Right, because of the second house, some fire council has determined that that's something that they want to look after the special use part, so that's why.
We don't normally, what are two houses on one property?
I don't know what your history there is.
Yeah, so I'll clarify real quick. I'm going to read, if you go to article four, R one zoning, under seventeen dash four dash or point two, point one, it says the purpose of the district, says in order to increase the supply of housing and to recognize the changes in the demographic demographic of the neighborhood while continuing to maintain the character of the district, accessory dwelling units are permitted by special use permit approved by the zoning administrator or the planning commission. In addition to special care facilities and certain governmental, educational, recreational, and utility uses are permitted by special use, so on and so forth. So that, I'm not intending to put two different properties for sale on the prop, like that's, I'm not asking for a multifamily dwelling. That's not, I think that's what kind of the, I think that's what, I think I'm answering that correctly. So accessory dwelling uses is, is by special use permit, like Ted said, but I'm not asking for something outside of the zoning ordinance or for a special exception. It does say in the R one zoning that ADUs are allowed or by right with a special use permit on the property.
So you can have, you can have an accessory building, if you, an accessory house, if it's a special exception, right?
Yes, sir, a special use permit, yes, sir. And that's what was approved on Colorado last year. There's a dwelling unit, and I don't have the case in front of me, but that was approved in twenty twenty four, it's probably about five hundred feet away. That was approved for the same, same use I'm going for now.
So you're wanting to build your additional unit first and then your house second?
Uh, the primary dwelling unit's being built first, so whatever's built first is dictated as the primary building unit or dwelling unit within the state of Virginia. And whatever's built second is considered the accessory dwelling unit.
Are you building the house first?
I'm building my first dwelling unit first, which is a thirteen seventy five dwelling unit with storage underneath and housing above. That's my intended use, primary. The accessory dwelling unit, I'm not sure when that will be built. I don't have a timeframe. I don't have the financing to build it in the next twelve months.
If I have to refer to that, that shows the size of the buildings.
Yeah.
Could you identify the one that you're going to build first by its dimension?
Yes, my intention is to build the twenty six by twenty six dwelling unit first. And the reason why we cited, you know, dwelling units both on there is they, both dwelling units are shown, are shown within the buildable area. So that's all within the zoning, the zoning ordinance with setbacks. And also adheres to, it adheres to seventeen dash four, point two, point five lot size and setbacks. My required lot area is within that. It also goes under subtext two, it says percentage of lot coverage. It says all buildings, including accessory buildings on the lot shall not cover more than twenty five percent of the area of such of a lot. So that whole buildable area that those two dwelling units sit in is, is related to that. One, the setback ordinance, but also the size of the twenty five percent rule. So actually, I'm, with me building a primary dwelling unit and then also an accessory dwelling unit, I'm actually building less than legally allowed per the zoning ordinance. Structure, structure size wise.
We approve a similar from Colorado for you?
Uh, it was, it was ordinance twenty twenty four, I actually just, I found it in my notes, I'm sorry. Ordinance twenty twenty four dash O R D dash O six, it was allowed at two oh one Colorado Avenue for conversion of an existing single car garage into an accessory dwelling unit. And they did not, I'm reading their conditions, their conditions did not include limiting to no short term rentals, which is what I conditioned, I think, for Ted mentioned, was nothing's allowed to be rented.
Oh, it's a different avenue?
Yeah, and it was just for their, for their kids. It wasn't, nobody's living, there's no kitchen, there's no bathroom, there's nothing like that in there.
Yeah. Yeah, there's plumbing, there's a plumbing kitchen. I believe, I'm looking, uh, yeah, new kitchen pass through, they've got closets, bathroom. I'm just, I pulled their case, I'm looking at what their, their, their plans they submitted with their special use permit. Power. Yeah, they've got everything. But anyhow, that's, that's what, that's ordinance twenty twenty four, or twenty twenty four O R D O six, that was approved last year by town council.
So my, my hang up, I guess, and Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, that current, I call it a barn or shed that's there, is not, is not considered a dwelling at all, it has no kitchen. So am I wrong in thinking this is different than the Colorado case? Because at Colorado, we had an existing house. And that is a dwelling, and then they were converting the outbuilding into another dwelling. But in this case, we have no dwelling, so can we approve an accessory dwelling when there's no primary dwelling to begin with?
Four elements are met in the first thing that's built. The four elements being the dwelling unit elements of living space, bathing space, cooking space, and the sleeping area. If those four elements are met, regardless of which structure comes first, that structure becomes the principal use. That's the first use of the property. What's there now is basically.
Which will be torn down, right?
Would be, would be torn down.
So what's coming is the primary residence.
First one built is the primary.
First one.
And then what they're wanting, what he's wanting that the ADU to be is.
The larger structure that's closer to.
Or whatever's built second. There's no dictation of size. The, the proffered or the, the plat that was put before you, it's just showing a potential size of a thirty two by thirty three, I think that's what it shows. But it can be much smaller. I have to also adhere to fire code and building code. So it's also rendering to display exactly what fits inside the buildable area. And how the two dwelling units would adhere to the zoning case and to the zoning ordinance of how it sits in front of a setback or the usage of the lot. But I, but I do, but, but I do, but I do think a kitchen was approved for the Colorado, if you look at their tag under their, and maybe I'm wrong, but their plans that they displayed showed number two is new kitchen pass through, one of them says new kitchen pass through gas strut awning window. So I mean, yeah, yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
Um, which, um, now I'm distracted and lost my mind. Um, how soon do you plan to begin construction?
Oh, gosh, I would hope, it depends on when building permit releases my, my building in permit. Maybe, I couldn't tell you. If they release it in three weeks, it could be June. If they release it in six months, it could be when they come out. It's all based on them. I would say within thirty to sixty days after Middlesex Building Inspections or releases the permit.
And then how long after this is completed do you plan on building the secondary?
As soon, as soon as I can get funding. I couldn't answer that for you with tariffs and financing right now. I couldn't tell you, yeah, I don't, I don't have that, I don't have that number in my head, I'm sorry. I don't have the funding right now. So it's hard for me to answer that question. I'm building what I can afford.
All the questions I have, anyone else?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer anything else if anything comes up, so I'll yield my time to Ted.
Any questions for Ted?
No.
All right, so we should open it up for public comment?
Yeah.
See what those are, and then Mr. Lipinski may be able to respond to some of their concerns if he's solid or hang on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll hold till all public comments so I can answer those questions that have come up.
It's just as a reminder on the, on the public comment, this is not an open conversation. It's a step up, say your piece. Five, five, five at the outside, we like three, but five is good. And then we can give Mr. Lipinski a chance to respond potentially. All right. Pat Pannas.
Hello, everyone. I'm Pat Pannas, I live at one nine one Taylor Avenue. I am just down the road from the proposed site. I want to preface my remarks by saying I'm in agreement that anyone who wants to buy a lot in Urbana that conforms to the, the lot size, the building size, et cetera, has a right to put a primary residence on that lot. No question there. My concern, I've lived in town since nineteen seventy seven. I have seen the town grow. I have enjoyed the growth. I lived on Rappahannock Avenue, I'm now over on Cross Street and Taylor. But my concern on this proposal is I was at the planning commission last Thursday. It was obvious to me that the planning commission was very unsure of what was proposed before them. The ADU questions, the primary residence question, what's comes first, what comes second. To me, there is not been enough transparency. We don't know elevation proposals. The lot, the, the building sizes have changed on the plat, on the plats. They were twenty five by something and now it's twenty six by twenty six. Mr. Lipinski just said those could change. I'm not sure what is actually going to be built there. I don't think the town wants to become a rental town. Are we all going to start putting ADUs in our backyards and renting our, our houses, then moving someplace else? Which is why we came to Urbana in the first place? If he wants to build a primary residence right there on that lot, I'm all for it for the family. I don't understand why we need two dwellings on a point two seven acre property. It might conform to whatever the code is, but at this point, we don't even know what's going to be built there, what it's going to look like. Maybe we don't, maybe that's not any of our concern. I certainly don't want to tell, anyone to tell me I can't have a purple door if I'm on a purple door. But I would like to know the size of the buildings, are they two story, are they three story? I mean, you got, now you've got two buildings, you've got at least four cars on that property parking for the family or the rentals, which I believe at least one is going to be a rental. And then what if someone brings a boat? Where's the boat going? The congestion at our end of town is already enormous. I realize that's not Mr. Lipinski's problem, but adding to that is a second dwelling, which I think is just overdone. The, the, the planning commission was skeptical, they were unsure of what they were even voting for. They should have shelved it for sixty days. I don't even know how it moved forward, although I think that they were in a way a little coerced by, by some of the members, like, let's just get this out of here. So I would ask the town council to please give this some consideration tonight, not to vote on it perhaps tonight, but to really look into what is happening. I want some transparency. I want to know exactly what's going on. You know, is it an ADU, is it a primary dwelling, which one's which, who's coming first? I, I just, I think there's too much skepticism, too much concern over the end of town where there's a dead end. There's hardly any room to go. I, I don't understand the two dwellings. And they are two dwellings, whether it's called an ADU or a primary, whatever, they're two dwellings. I don't understand why it's a storage unit, it's a storage shed with an apartment, or it's a garage and an apartment. I don't understand the difference between that. We were told of the planning commission, it's storage and an apartment. Looks like a garage to me, but I'm, I haven't seen no plan, so I don't know what it is. Or what either dwelling is wanting to be. So I, I am concerned for my neighbors at that end of town and for me as a person that lives in Urbana and cares about where the town, where the town is going and where it wants to go. Are we going to be a rental town? Or are we going to be people that come here and care about the town and want to stay here? And, or do we want people just coming and going with no, no bedding, no, no, you know, who are you? Okay, I'm here for a weekend, I don't care about litter or whatever. I, I don't, I don't understand the two dwelling purpose. One dwelling, I'm all for. Thank you for your time.
All right, Lisa Wiggins.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Wiggins and I live at one ninety Colorado Avenue, so we back up to this proposed property. The esteemed mayor, council members, and Mr. Administrator, we are being, you are being asked to grant a variance to Holinsky LLC to build two dwelling units on a lot located at one eighty one West Avenue, Urbana. The first building to be built will be declared the primary dwelling at six seventy five square feet over an equally sized storage space. According to the letter sent by the town, this is the ADU. I understand it to be the primary, as Mr. Lipinski is very adamant of. The ADU will be built at an unspecified time. This has been described to me at four hundred square feet, a thousand square feet, or two thousand square feet by Mr. Lipinski. The current site plan shows the ADU to be roughly a thousand square feet. The only thing that is clear is that the building over the storage area must be the primary. While it is true, the necessary setbacks are there, that doesn't make it right. This variance will set a precedent, which will affect the housing density of our community. And with time, potentially cause the overdevelopment of our community. With more housing, you have to look at next step. More services will be needed. Police, sewer, water, trash removal. Are we prepared as a town to accept the increased burden to be placed on you? I want to read you very quickly, I won't read it in its entirety because some of it's personal communicate. But I did talk to the person that actually sold the lot. She notified me in January or February of this year that she had sold it to an older couple. Well, I asked her more about that today. She said, let me get home first and then I can answer your question. I was told that his in laws, who used to live in Urbana, wanted to move back. He is going to build them a house on that lot. And his name, Lipinski? So there's not a lot of transparency going on here, in my opinion. I would ask for you to please think carefully before approving something of this magnitude. There are several vacant lots here in town, as well as houses sitting on double lots, ripe for development. I don't believe that this will be a one and done situation, once this precedent has been set. I want to thank you for your consideration, Ms. Sam.
Thank you. Lisa Satterways.
Thank you all so much for your time. I attended the Urbana Planning Commission meeting last week, where after much discussion, skepticism, and confusion, somehow your proposal was approved for the development of one eighty one West Avenue. I am of the opinion that three people approving a plan does not necessarily mean that it should be done. At that meeting, the town administrator cited an approval by the town in twenty twenty four for an ADU on Colorado Avenue. What was not mentioned, or perhaps he didn't know, the ADU was approved from an already existing structure, not a new building. Also, the owner put in writing to the neighbors that he would not be renting the ADU as it was for family and guests from Richmond while visiting him. Therefore, no one in the neighborhood opposed this project. The plot at eight one eighty one West Avenue is a quarter of an acre, a very small parcel. The plan is to build two large two structures. Two large two story structures, one a primary dwelling and the other an apartment over a storage area. Mr. Lipinski stated at last week's meeting that he would proffer that the ADU would only be rented by the month at a minimum. He must have known that by Urbana standards, one month or more means it is not considered short term rental, but long term rental. He also stated that he would not give up his right to rent the proposed primary dwelling for any length of time, which means it could be rented. for any length of time, which means it could be rented short-term or long-term. Basically, one can interpret this as two rental units, at least for the foreseeable future. Certainly, Mr. Lipinski may eventually retire and move his family to this property as he already has close family ties here. And he already has one rental unit here on Cross Street. However, as a young commercial contractor in Richmond, this is most likely further down the road. In the meantime, we, the neighbors of Kent Street, West Avenue and Colorado and Cross Street, get to enjoy an overcrowded lot with continuously short-term and/or long-term renters. Already, this street, composed of twenty percent of this street are short-term renters. There are four homes on the square block with one eighty-one West Avenue. And three of the four full-time homeowners are opposed to this plan as it is. The fourth owner is our mayor, and I didn't ask him because it could be a conflict of interest. Along with adjacent homeowners that have views of this property and other town residents, we have acquired twenty-seven signatures on our petition, which all includes Urbana citizens who are opposed to this project as it is. I would ask the town council to please consider Urbana town residents' desires and opinions in regards to this matter. If approved, I feel that we'd be setting a precedent for overdevelopment of dwellings used for investment and rental, rather than homeowners who are invested in our community and full-time residents. I would urge each of you to carefully and thoughtfully consider this important matter before making any decisions on it. I would ask you to drive by one eighty-one West Avenue and picture two large planned residences and decide if you would want this across the street from you or next to your home in Urbana. I believe that you would feel the same way that the majority of the residents nearby do. I don't think any of the neighbors are opposed to one dwelling on this lot, whether it's used for rental or not. We are most certainly opposed to two. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sharon.
Sharp.
Sharp.
Hi, I'm Sharon Sharp and I live at four forty Cross Street, which is directly across the street from the parcel we're talking about. Now, I want to take a minute to kind of reiterate what my neighbors have said, but also to ask you to take a little closer look at this proposal. I was provided this from the town, which I believe all of you have looked at as well. I would encourage you to read the news. This isn't a survey. This is based on a survey from nineteen seventy-one. Is it accurate? We don't know. How many things have changed since then? So we're looking at this and its setbacks and how pretty the drawing is, is it actually out? And it states on there clearly, this is not a survey. There's no benefit of easement. Any kind of information on easement? There was a utility goal when we were up until here recently. That has wires going through it. Now, it didn't relocate it. Is there utilities? Offer, offer good that it may? We don't know. I think you're basing a decision off of something that, that has no basis. I would encourage you to want at least more accurate information than a drawing. I took the time to look at the comprehensive plan a bit and I won't go into huge detail over it. But part of this is, since it was already shared with me through comments, part of that I think is a bit tricky, but I'll add my two cents to this. Land use goals and objectives. It says retain and promote low-density residential development within the town. I think that applies to this. Okay. Let's start with this. The review. And I'll just read the person. And this is section seventeen dash nine point four, subsection A. In consideration of an application for a special use permit from the planning commission and the town council, shall give due regard to the nature and the condition of all adjacent uses and structures and the probable effect on them and the proposed use. And we believe this, and myself and my husband, sleep. I have two bedrooms, a living room and a dining room. We're just going to have to look at this every day. I ask you to take that into consideration. And lastly, same zoning ordinance, subsection seventeen dash four dash two dash one. The purpose of the district. The purpose of this district is to provide low-density family detached residential development together with those public and given my couple's use case. And accessory that may be necessary are normally compatible with the residential surroundings. We have single families. And we would prefer that it stay that way. We're not opposed to a single dwelling unit, but I think two, and especially two, have the potential to be rental properties. Which is pretty much the density is two-five and a quarter of the acres of property. And lastly, accessory buildings. This is the zoning seventeen dash three point one. Except for building accessories to a farm, no accessory building shall be constructed upon a lot for more than six months prior to the beginning, construction of the main dwelling. And no accessory building shall be used for more than six months unless the main building on the lot is also being used or unless the main building is under construction. No accessory building on a farm or otherwise shall be used for dwellings except in accordance with provisions of this chapter. So as we talk about timing, it's in the zone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Snead.
Hello, Dan Snead, two seventy-one Colorado. Thank you for allowing me to talk a little bit about this. I moved here in eighty-six. Why did I move here? Yeah, the Riverton section caught my eye. It's an area that's, there's some, there's some dated homes there that I like. We, we like it. My family, my daughter grew up here. It's a great place to be. I don't see it becoming a big place of vacation rentals, people in and out. I like it the way it is. And we do have a few vacant lots there. If somebody wants to build a home for their family, I'm not against that, just like Batista said. If somebody wants to come here and build a place to enjoy Urbana like I do, I'm all for it. But to go beyond that, putting up other buildings that could possibly be vacation by owner and that sort of thing, I think we need to take another look at this. We don't need to go any farther than that until we study this a little bit more. The other thing I wanted to bring, bring up, in the section of town where we are, I looked at the Stewart and Warrior Water Facilities drawings and things like that. We have very little water down there, like on Kent Street. One and a half inch pipe and stuff like that. Luckily, we have two fire hydrants at the end of Taylor. But beyond that, there's very little. As we go and add more families, we've got two very nice homes going up on Cross Street now. We have a new home on Kent Street that's going to be finished real soon. Please take a look at what's going on. We can't go but so far with this stuff. I'm sure, you know, we're doing the right thing. And adding these homes, is someone looking to see what about, you know, water, sewer? And, and parking and all the things that y'all have mentioned? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Megan Hall.
Um, I just had a couple of things that I would like to point out. Just to apparently have the only differing opinion here. As several people have already mentioned, there are several other short-term rentals nearby, including the very next-door neighbor. So I just wanted to point that out because I think, as someone else mentioned earlier, I don't know that that is all Mr. Lipinski's responsibility. And it seems like there is some confusion about what the lot will be served as. I don't think it's going to be a vacation home. I don't hear that many vacation homes being built on top of storage facilities. But anyway, I wanted to just also point out that we are pretty desperate in this area for affordable housing. So if this were, if it were in plan to be a, not a short-term rental, but a long-term rental, we could certainly use some places that people could have wanted to live in the town. I know that we have a problem with the housing because most of our businesses around here are struggling to find employees. A lot of families have been pushed out due to other Airbnb. And so I just wanted to point that out. And I also wanted to say that I, I do appreciate everyone's concern about Urbana becoming overdeveloped because I also have been coming here my entire life. My family has also been here since the fifties or sixties. So I, I'm in total agreement with that. But I, I had Lisa Wiggins come to my door and ask me to sign her petition. And I asked her what it was all about. And she told me that she thought the lot was too small for what the new owner wanted. And that if this was a precedent, that, that people could put tiny house communities and empty lots wherever they felt like they wanted to do that. And I, I just don't think that that's true. I know from actually asking zoning years ago if we could put a tiny home on one of our properties, we weren't allowed to do so because it was a tiny home. Anything on wheels can't be in the town anyway. So, only point that I wanted to make with that is if there were twenty-seven signatures on that petition, I wonder if that was something that she used to get people to agree with her, which isn't true about tiny home communities. So I just wanted to say those things and back to it from you. Thanks, Megan.
Thank you. Sandy Hayes.
I agree with almost all the comments that have been previously discussed about this property. And, and there's, I did a little analysis. I hope I can talk about that because they touched on it a little bit in the comment of how many short-term rentals that we have in Urbana according to what I could find online. And we have seven in the residential district. We could possibly have two more if we did this in Holinsky property. However, three of those seven is on Kent Street. One street out from us on Colorado. And if you have two more here, that is five. So we've got a concentration, even with three really, on Kent Street. We're going to have a con, we're getting, we're getting a concentration in that area about there. So I think that we need to, I think that we need to look at an ongoing basis and also maybe add to our ordinance, reviewing from time to time how many that we have in our town, where they're located, so that we can avoid concentrations of them in certain neighborhoods, like oversaturating a neighborhood with SDRs. And also maybe a test on how many that we want period in this, in our residential area. Because we only have two hundred and sixty-six households according to the twenty-three census that I looked up. So we've got about at least three percent already of our residential, residential, I don't know because I don't usually speak up here, so I can't, as you know. But anyway, we have, I know it's about three percent when it's in the calculation, three percent of our residential dwellings are SDRs. Maybe that's, but it was a far. And I pulled off a, recently Hampton, Virginia, rethought some of their, you know, of what their, the policies on these SDRs. And they just recently changed theirs to one percent. So I'm not saying it has to be one percent. I'm saying that we need to establish limitations going forward so that in five years, we're not covered up with SDRs in our residential areas. And I agree with Dan and a few others here have said that. Why did we move here? We moved here because Urbana is a beautiful, quaint, wonderful little town with wonderful people. And we don't want a lot of people coming in on the short-term rental that we don't know, coming and going all the time. We have people in our community that, that makes it clear that.
Thank you. Anyone else that isn't signed up that wants to fight Ben before we close public comment? All right? Close public comment. At this point, do we let Mr. Lipinski?
Oh, I didn't know if we needed to see the petition or what it said.
You should give that to Quirk.
Because it wasn't collected by just one person. Yeah, it was three of us.
Yeah, that's why, just make sure that they're getting for the record.
I'm sorry. Using the short term. Don't say anything about honey. You're saying that.
And actually, Sandy, if you could give the short-term rentals that you find from Michelle and make sure that this dovetails with her with that.
Yeah, that would be very helpful.
Mr. Lipinski, so Lipinski, do you want to respond?
Yeah, so will. I'm going to try to remember everything, so bear with me. I first want to lay out that what this case is for is, has nothing to do with short-term rentals. And I'll, I'll probably defer to Ted and let him explain the process. But there is a completely different process for short-term rentals in the town of Urbana. And this has nothing to do with an application for a short-term rental. It sounds like there's a lot of opposition and concern over that. And this case has nothing to do with a short-term rental. I'm not approved for a short-term rental. That's a whole nother application process. And I'll actually defer that to Ted, if you don't mind, just to explain what the short-term rental process is with the town of Urbana.
I'll do that later, okay? Anything else you wanted to say, Mr. Lipinski?
Yeah, uh, yes, I'll, I'll go through a couple of things. Ms. Panis mentioned the planning commission was questionable on their passing. It passed, I think, one person abstained. There was four people there, one abstained, and it passed three oh. The building size is a twenty-six by twenty-six. It says twenty-five by twenty-six on the application. Ted has an email that we went back and forth on that updated that. That just explained the prime, what, what's being built first. I understand you might have concerns of elevation or size, but that's, again, that has, I'm not sure really how to answer that question. It sounds like you, you mentioned something of a garage. There's no garage. Someone mentioned, Lisa Wiggins mentioned the, the building size is six hundred and something square feet. It's thirteen seventy-five by legal recordation and by building permit. Says the second building, Lisa Wiggins said, four to, four hundred square feet, a thousand square feet, two thousand square feet. I have no idea where that information came from. I'm not quite sure what it was referencing. She referenced concerns with utilities. Ted mentioned earlier that all government agencies had reviewed and had no comment of concern. Said something about the owner. I told him, my in-laws are moving back. My in-laws actually live in Urbana and that's not accurate. I talk to the owner probably once a week. She had something else. Vicky mentioned PC support that was approved again by three oh. Again, there's no apartment, there's no short-term rental. She mentioned the ADU on Colorado was built first and that's not how it has to be done. You don't have to build an ADU first to get a permit afterwards. There's no prob, I know she mentioned that he told the neighbors that they wouldn't do, rent it or short-term rent it, but there's no condition in the zoning case. Mine has a. Mine has a condition in the zoning case stating no short-term rental. And again, that's not what I'm applying for. I'm also not a contractor in Richmond. I'm not filing for a short-term rental permit with this case. Um, Sharon, I, I couldn't quite hear Sharon everything, but something with the permit or the record plat. There's a legal meets and bounds recorded at Middlesex Courthouse that shows the meets and bounds of the property. The, um, the plat is, uh, not deemed recorded or fully reckoned until it's, till it's approved, which will come after this case. So the plat and the buildable sizes are, the buildable sizes are still by code and by zoning ordinance. Um, talk something about the comp plan. Uh, R1 zoning specifically states that a detached single-family dwellings, and actually says permitted uses and structures number seven is an accessory dwelling, accessory buildings and uses including, but not limited to accessory garages, storage buildings, workshops, farm building structures, servant quarters or caretaker quarters, guest quarters, swimming pools, tennis courts, and similar recreation. And then it goes on, it's actually says additional dwelling units or SUPs. Um, this is not a two, two-family dwelling. That's not what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for a multifamily dwelling on the property. Again, Dan, uh, Mr. Snead mentioned that short-term rentals seem to be a large concern. Again, this has nothing to do with the short-term rental, I'm not applying for a short-term rental permit. Uh, mentioned that utilities, um, and a stress on, I guess, uh, facilities. But again, uh, this was all sent out to all government agencies and that there's no concern. Parking came up twice. Uh, the driveway, if you actually look at the proposed six, the 26 by 26 building has a 40-foot-long driveway, uh, which will be a minimum of 18 feet wide. A V-dot parking space is a nine by 18, so actually succeed having more than four parking spots on the property. Uh, gosh, hold on, I got one more. Sandy, I'm, again, I'm not applying for a short-term rental, seems to be a big presser here. I, I, I think STR, short-term rental, I'm, I'm not aware of that term, but again, I'm, the, her whole concern, it seems like goes over a short-term rental. I'm not, I'm not asking for a short-term rental. Uh, and just so everyone's clear, the Urbana code does say rentals are by right for anyone that rents it for over 30 days. That's town code. And again, I'm not asking for a short-term rental. So I think that's everything. Um, I was trying to jot down notes, so if any other questions arise, feel, feel free to ask me and I can, uh, I can step back in. But I'll yield my time to Ted.
Hey, um, I, I think that covered most of the things that were said. So this is when we close the public hearing? Okay. Thank you.
Can the public not, not ask any more questions after that?
Correct.
Okay, uh, one thing I want to bring up, the file, as I indicated at the beginning, the file's a public record. It's here, uh, and it's, it's a, it's a fluid document. So like tonight's signup sheet, petition, that would be in the file, um, pulling, pulling, pulling. Uh, and it's open for a public inspection. Um, Mr. Lipinski specifically asked about the, um, the, our process in short-term rental. Um, I'm somewhat at a loss as he asked for short-term rental issue, but said it's not about short-term rental. Um, but I'll go ahead and address short-term rental. And I'm going to defer somewhat to the treasurer who happens to be here because she's more familiar with this. She's seen it from, um, from the genesis. Um, we've had discussions before about limiting the short-term rentals. It's specifically putting a number on. And my advice to you at that time, it remains that time, show me anywhere else in the zoning ordinance where you say you can only have 13 used car lots or 14 restaurants or six of this or seven of that. And how did you come up with the number? What was the, how did you base that number? Uh, basically, it's, it's called free market enterprise. Michelle will be able to tell you that the number of SDRs has decreased. It's going down, all right? Now, there may be a cluster in this neighborhood, but overall, they're going down. It's an administrative process. Uh, basically, the zoning ordinance, um, that they come in for the permit, um, Michelle reviews the financial aspect and maintains the financial reporting. They renew every year. There's a $25 renewal fee. I've implemented a process this year if they come in for renewals, I'll spot check a couple and actually go into the facility to make sure that they have a fire signature and has it smoking on. But, you know, what, what's the noise limit, um, they'll open pit, make sure everything's like, like it's safe. But essentially, uh, another by right in certain zoning districts like the R1. And I think the cluster here is proximity to the water. That's why there might be a cluster in that area, close to the water, close to water. Walking town, you're not that far away from anything at any point in time. I put that answer, that's basically the administrator's license. Um, you know, it, it shows to me a process that looks, there's a zoning sign-off, which has been implemented the last year. Um, there's a zoning sign-off and special licenses issued with an administrative process. Do you have to take any questions?
No, I have none. Thank you. So in terms of, uh, a vote to pass, deny or defer, do I close the public hearing first? Yes or no? Yes. All right. The public hearing is now closed. Do I have a recommendation?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion after hearing things tonight to divert, defer the approval of this to a later date to gather more information. I really think we need a little more information. And I don't think it would hurt much. Uh, Mr. Lipinski doesn't seem to have a date in mind for when he would start building. So I'm not, I don't see that that would be a problem. We have to listen to the public.
So motion to defer is on the table. Do I have a second? All right. Uh, any further discussion?
No.
So I need to vote, voice one on this or? Yeah, okay. People for all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right. So that has been deferred. Mr. Lipinski, thanks for chiming in.
Thank you. Uh, the one thing that I think that needs to be highlighted is how many days do you defer the case? Because that's got to be recognized. If not, there's no, there's no eternal deferral legally. You have to recognize how many days you defer the case. Building, building permit will be, will be, uh, submitted with Middlesex County.
The county administrator speaking.
We can place this on the agenda for your next meeting at full.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that because I'm going to repeat it.
We're going to, it will be placed as old business on the next agenda.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And please, uh, I appreciate your time. Please reach out if you have any questions. Thank you.
I need to know exactly what's going on in California in order to make the decision. Well, that's, that's, that's why.
That's why we're defer.
All right. Next item on the agenda is, um, Budget 2526. Mr. Costin.
Public hearing is on the fiscal year 2025, 2026 proposed budget. It tells of the authority of 15.2-2506, so Virginia 1950 amendment. Since the beginning of 2025, the Finance Committee staff and work developed the proposed budget for the town of Urbana. Behind the scenes, the significant community partners were approached for their request. The format has been altered to better align with the financial systems we use day to day. In one-time line items have been eliminated, although the record of these is retained. In the packet, you'll find the entire proposed budget as recommended by the Finance Committee. Fiscal impact is as proposed and as follows. The general fund revenues and expenses balanced at $772,542 with no tax increase. This includes an across-the-board 3% cost of living adjustment. Exclusion of the clerk in this regard was an oversight and can be adjusted with adoption as follows. The expenditures add to the town clerk's salary to $1,650. This offers VRS, Medicare, and Social Security an additional $991.65. The total $2,641.65 results, rounding up its $2,642. Compensate reduced telecommunications and cellphone expenses to $9,000 from $10,000. Increase landscape contract services to, um, this actually should be decreased. Uh, late, well, landscape contract services to $19,000 from $20,000. And increase part-time, again, decrease part-time administrative assistance to $2,358 from $3,000.
Who is that?
That is, that is a, a, not a, it's identified person.
Okay, okay.
It's a buffer.
Okay.
Um, while evaluations were conducted on key personnel this year, the effort will be expanded next year to the degree raises are possible next year. Those evaluations, along with seniority, will be a factor in any pay increase. No fees are proposed increased, but this too is subject to alteration to capture the true cost of doing business. Water fund revenues and expenses balanced at $380,000 with in-town bi-monthly water rate a minimum usage of 6,000 gallons, $54.71. And over 6,000 gallons, $5.08 per thousand gallon. And out-of-town bi-monthly water rate, a minimum of 6,000 gallons, $87.33. Over 6,000 gallons would be $8.40 per thousand. These figures reflect an increase. The Tabor Fund revenues and expenses balanced at $30,000. This does not reflect the current fund balance, which varies with the financial market. The Upton Point Marina revenues and expenses balanced at $78,600. Self-funding community activity revenues and expenses balanced at $7,200. Staff recommendation is proceed to the public hearing this meeting is advertised on the proposed fiscal year 2025, 26 budget presented. Council action requested, yes, but after required timeframe, the time period has passed between the public hearing and adoption has been met. Your next regular meeting will suffice. There's no sample motion because you cannot vote, by law, you cannot vote on the budget tonight. Be happy to take any questions you might have at this. Thank you.
Um, we've got Megan Hall for public comment.
Megan.
Change your cap?
I'm here on behalf of Urbana Main Street, and I wanted to respectfully ask that the town consider including our organization as a line item initiative. Even a modest amount of support from the town would go a long way and not just in helping us operate, but in legitimizing our role in the eyes of our partners, donors, and granting agents. We've recently completed a strategic planning session, launched key community projects, and are actively pursuing grant funding, including for wayfinding signage and a public mural that will reflect our town's history and identity. But to do this work well and consistently, we need capacity. And being able to hire a part-time executive director, um, someone who can manage communications and organize volunteers and write these grants is our next big step. Backing Urbana Main Street is not just an investment in us, but it's an investment in everything around us. Our local businesses, our events, our residents, and the shared pride that we all have in the town. Our mission is rooted in collaboration, and we are here to uplift Urbana as a force. Economic development does not happen in isolation. It takes vision, coordination, and community-wide support. And we are ready and willing to do the work. Uh, we're simply asking for the town to show in its budget, um, that it sees value in what we're doing.
Thank you. All right. Um, that, I guess, we close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to public comment.
I mean, I, I think they have a valid point. Economic development is tremendously important. You know, me, I voted against anything that requires extra money. I mean, I know though, all the time, we all laugh at me, I get it. But, but Megan has a really good point. There's several people that are really pushing for this. I don't see $5,000. It's a lot of money, but it's the same time for economic development. We've never had, really had anybody work on that. And I, for what, am willing to give a try to let them see what they can do. And all it takes is $5,000, certainly can't hurt. If it doesn't work, then we don't do it again, but.
And, and.
They're working hard, and I feel like they're working hard on some change.
We have, um, talked about it as part of the budgeting process. We didn't put a line item in it because we were having trouble drafting the budget the way that it was, although we're mindful of that. And if things loosen up, we absolutely want to support them in any way we can. But at this point, the budget is advertised the way it is. And if we were to amend the budget and set up new line items, we'd have to go through the whole process again.
So what does that mean?
Okay, okay. But, um, but I don't think we want to do that at, at this point because, um, but we're, we're mindful of that.
I don't want to lose, I don't want them to lose their momentum. And if we keep shoving everything like we do down the road, uh, it's, it's, you're going to get discouraged. And I don't want them to get discouraged.
I agree.
So can we get this done? I mean, before I'm dead. It's a long time to get everything done.
I guess the next week, we have a.
And I'm not dying, everybody. But is there something we can do?
For a one-time come out of the paper? Fund, um.
Yeah, is it over a million?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, uh, the money dropped back, um, that it's like a million fifty or something like that.
To fund that a one-time.
My heart is attached, Larry.
Thing, too.
So I say we take it as we got it, and if we got over a million in the table, let's give them $5,000 to let them get rolling.
We'll bring that up at the next finance meeting. Well, I don't, that would be a Tabor item, which is, which is separate and, um. Well, let's shut finance.
Well, that is the Finance Committee here.
Yeah. Let's do that.
I mean, this young lady is up so much work.
And we'll talk to her. And, and, and we have, we have talked about it before.
Yeah, I think if we can take that one time out of the Tabor fund and, and work with, Urbana Main Street has not ever been my favorite thing at all. So for me to be saying this, this is, this is taking a huge, um, this is huge for me to say this. Um, I, I don't like the way it started, but either way, here nor there, um, I, um, yeah, I, it looks like it, I, I have a lot of faith in Megan, so that's why I'm putting this out there.
Okay.
Not in gracious, so, so let's get it done.
You were going to say.
Technically, with the conversation started by council member.
Yeah.
That, that effectively closed the public hearing.
That, that.
We already closed the public hearing.
Okay.
That closed the public.
Okay, all right. So, so, um, moving on after that kumbaya moment, um, do we have public comment from anything else?
No, but we're, let's finish this. We're going to, you're going to have a meeting with the Finance Committee?
We'll bring, we'll bring that up for finance.
And then they'll know something at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
So we could possibly say yes at the next meeting, if people do that.
Right.
Okay.
Possible.
Oh, there's another, Megan Hall, is that, you're up here twice.
Yes, yes, as, as the president of Urbana Main Street.
No, 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 this is the third, that was public hearing.
This is the third one, what are you up to?
I saw you on all three.
Okay, all right. It's like, I'm really busy. All right. That's good, all right, that's the public comment. Um, and, and that was our response to your public comment.
Yeah.
Which of that is appropriate. All right. This is out of that. Um.
I think we do.
Session matters. What's the topic? Nothing?
Nothing.
All right. We don't have any action items?
I know what it is.
Um, do you have one to adjourn? No, we do have some things that go into closed meeting.
I know, but we're still going to adjourn.
Yeah.
I mean, go into closed session.
We have to go to the closed session.
Yeah.
Um, I do have one announcement. Um, I have a, a, a letter, this is for. Um, I have a, a, a letter, this is for, uh, public knowledge. There was a letter, uh, from, uh, Steve Davis about the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. It's currently seeking public input on its upcoming 11th National Outer Continental Shelf Oil and Gas Leasing Program, which could expand offshore oil and gas drilling near our coast of Virginia. And, um, the council has a resolution in 2018 opposing that, but in this case, since the resolution is on the record from the council, this was a request for public individuals, if they have opposition that, to write their, or if they're for it, to let their representatives know, and we're gonna post it on the, ask Ms. Branch to post it on the website, that you can do a link to, um, uh, put your two cents into your Congress representatives and senators, et cetera. So, that's my announcement, anybody else have any other announcements?
I think Saturday, June 14th, make sure everybody comes out. Raise it, and, raise it, and, oh, yeah, thank goodness.
All right.
Who doesn't, you all for the last?
I'm sorry?
Who doesn't, you all for the last?
Thank you, thank you, that was, turned out good.
All right, thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you, thank you all.
Okay. We'll be here, I'm sorry.
Are you leaving? All right. Yeah. I'll, I'll hold it. Thanks. Hopefully, I'll be a lot better. Maybe I'll improve on the last. Sorry. I know, you've been on my friend. Well, you've been on my friend. Thank you.
What it was supposed to be, that's what I mean, huh? You know that.
Thank you. Hi, Angie, thank you. Bye, Megan, thank you. Megan, how was today? 4:00. What's the occasion, Megan?
Need to bring you over, are you okay?
Nope.
You don't want to.
For sure, it goes in the brush. Still there.
I gotta stay from that for a couple of days.
Stay from it forever.
But I'll remember, you'll probably be over there at 11:00 at night on your desk. That is Jim Brisk, I'll be there soon.
Okay.
Get this back here.
That was one of the Airbnbs that's no longer an Airbnb.
Right, right. Yeah, I said that, that was kind of, yeah, gonna be a self-corrective issue. I mean, this is like in the fish bar, how come this is not so pretty? Oh, no, but still, I need to know. They, uh, came out at 7:00. I'm enjoying the news. Better ask, you know, maybe. We've all seen the sheep, I'm glad it's the same time.
It's just, it's kind of a rainy day.
It might have, it might have gone down the river. Click on radar and it'll show you where it's coming. Is it near? I didn't hear that tone, which is, does it show 7:30? It has, it's 60 mile an hour when you go. I'm in my car, I'm way over here.
Ah, gee, it's hard.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna write in with the mayor, mayor of Detroit.
Well, I heard you turn the media in 10 minutes.
Say, wow, you were truthful to be here tonight.
Huh?
You were already truthful to be here.
Oh, thank you. I didn't want to be, I've been. Keep talking to you, man, that's, that's 400 dollars. Your motion.
I, I, I heard, yeah. All right, so, so we have to do, I was waiting for the closing of the room.
You gotta go with the door, I think.
All right, go, go ahead.
The motion, we'll prejudge that someone will be in some time, but we'll close the meeting according to Section 2.1-3711A3, to discuss and consider the acquisition of real property for public persons of public purpose, 390 Regent Street, for discussion in an open meeting with adversely centered community provisions and related areas of strategy of the county, and Section 2.2-3711A7, for briefing staff members pertaining to probable litigation against the no child or such reason in open meeting with adversity of.
I know, exactly, yeah.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you just click the pause button? See what's the pause?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Right here?
Yeah.
All right, that's not gonna knock out, Rob?
All right, need a motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene in the open session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, does, uh, someone want to read the motion, do you certify?
You can just say, um, approved SR1.
Approved SR1.
Not cert.
What the hell is SR1? I said certify. I said certify.
I said certify.
What am I certifying?
Then we're out of closed meeting and nothing we talk about.
Certify. You gotta certify, Robbie.
All right.
Still here, certify.
Okay.
All right.
Motion to adjourn. Second, third, fourth.